Commissioner Case?
Here.
Commissioner Hollins?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
And Vice Chair Over?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Will all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll bring this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is consideration of October 2022 regular meeting minutes as written or with noted corrections. Do I hear an improvement?
I make a move, we approve the minutes.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second item, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on the future agenda. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to address the council? No, we'll move on to A, public comment procedures. We don't have to read that. And instead of going on to old business, Rob wants to do a presentation here.
Vice Chair, members of the commission, we do have a presentation. I guess I would request that we skip down to the reports section of the agenda so our guest does not have to sit through the rest of our meeting if she does not care to. So if we could do that, I'd appreciate that. So we do have Sue Bethel from Kingman Rotary here to talk to us a little bit about their beautification projects and activities. So I will turn it over to...
All right, is this, is that better? Can you guys hear me? Good afternoon. People of action, that's what Kingman Route 66 Rotary Club is all about. We like to make things happen. My name is Susan Bethel and I'm a member of Kingman Route 66 Rotary Club. We are a service organization that provides Kingman with many events such as Kingman Festival of the Arts and Oktoberfest. And there are many opportunities to serve. Locally, we are going to partner with United Way to do a community-wide cleanup. And I had to get on this agenda because with you meeting quarterly, it wouldn't have happened until right before the cleanup. So, United Way has planned the Kingman Day of Caring Annual Community Cleanup for several years. The number of volunteers have dwindled since COVID. And this year, Kingman Route 66 has agreed to assist through our week of service. District 5495 does a week of service every year. This year, it's April 16th through the 22nd. I want to let you know and ask you to partner with us on this endeavor. Not only do we need volunteers to help, but we need to get the word out. The more we get the word out to the public, the more volunteers hopefully. And we would like to have volunteers learn about Kingman, what a wonderful place to live, and Rotary and United Way. The date of the cleanup is April 22nd. We hope to hold it 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. I've spoke with the Parks Commission and with City Manager Ron Foggan, and they're behind us on this. We hope to use Centennial Park as a meeting place to, for everybody to register, although United Way is going to have registration online too. So Rotary is people of action. And we feel that by doing a cleanup, and especially my areas that I walk are between the Dairy Queen to Gordon. That's a mess, you guys. That's a real mess. Along the wash, including, along that wash, including on that walking trail, it's bad. The vision is to clean areas around the community and remove trash that people leave. And there's a lot of it. There's a meeting tomorrow with United Way. And Becky Fawson, who is also in our Rotary Club and the CEO of The Chamber, is going to attend that meeting to find out more about what's going on. And now, you guys know that I wouldn't just stand here and just tell you this without wanting something, right? I want something. Not only do I want you to get the word out, but I want you to help us find volunteers. I want you to help us advertise. And I want you to come and help us as we make it a safe event. Because we feel safety is very important. I will be contacting the fire departments, the police departments, and hopefully get them to come out and help us be safe. The key to safety in something like this is to have two people, at least two people per team, two people working together. Wearing gloves, closed-toed shoes, closed-toed shoes, that doesn't sound right. Bring a hat, sunscreen, and a reusable water bottle. So that's, that's what we're working on. I was going to just do this just for Kingman Route 66 Rotary, but United Way has already paved the way and they've got things ready to go. So we're going to partner with them. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Beth, I've got a couple of questions. On this cleanup, is it going to be organized to where there's groups in different areas of the town?
Yes. We are, are hoping that we can get a list of areas that you want cleaned up. And then, you know, we can't go on private property.
Right.
And I know that the area by Walmart, that's a real site. And I won't say what kind of site.
Well, it's bad, we know.
Yeah. But because I don't travel all the roads and other people, that's why we need other people involved. Because I don't travel all the roads. I travel from my house in Walleye Ranch. I don't go to Walmart, but I do come downtown. And there's a lot of areas that I see. And I know that there's a lot of areas that Wayne is on. You know, I've, I've actually met Wayne right after we came here from Alaska. And he was start, had just started the cactus cleaners. So, you know, I've been his supporter for a while.
Okay. And I have another question that might be possibly directed to Rob. But the areas that you're looking for are suggestions for to be cleaned up. Will you be coordinating with her? Because a lot of times when we pick these areas, you know, we find out we can't do them. And so I'm just wondering how the areas that we would like to have done would, would work.
Yeah, Eddie's actually been working with United Way. He'll be at that meeting tomorrow. We're going to help them promote the event. So it's something that he's been working on for a while. Yeah, if you have any suggestions or anything, please forward them to me and we can pass them along and put them in with the rest of the...
Hey, can we go to this meeting tomorrow night?
It's in the morning at nine o'clock on Zoom.
Okay, oh, okay.
So I just, I just received the email. Did you get an email?
I didn't, but like I said, Eddie's been involved in that with United Way for a while.
Thank you so much, Beth, I appreciate it.
And Beth, could you leave Donna your contact information so some of us can contact you?
Yes, the last name's Bethel, the first name's Susan.
Susan, okay.
Everybody calls me Beth.
That was the first, that was, should have been my first question.
So any other questions? Okay, I expect to see all your faces on the 22nd helping clean up.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, if we want to finish up the reports section, then I guess we could head back to old business.
Okay.
The open meeting law training is going to be bumped to our next meeting. There's some staffing issues, but really with three vacancies, it might be beneficial to, to hold that for a meeting. And hopefully it will be full or close, close to full at our next meeting to go through that open meeting law training. So I think the last item on the reports section was on the cleanup report. So on November 19th, the commission and city staff conducted the cleanup on the east side of the Mojave Wash between Beverly and Airway, behind the Mojave County Library. So we had, I don't have an exact count on how many people we had there. We had 10 volunteers along with our, our staff members and picked up 26 bags of garbage that day. So if we could head back up to old business now?
Thank you, Rob, on the report. We'll move right along to number three, old business event calendar. Monthly update for the Clean City Commission Calendar of Events. Discussion and possible action regarding any new or rescheduled events. Obviously, we can get Susan's on our event calendar. It's already on there, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody have any comments?
Well, for January, I think, you know, thanks to Mr. Case and former Chair Woods, we're scheduled for the Chamber Commer Mixer on the 26th. And we'll be there to talk about Helping Hands Program, the Adopt a Block Program, and the Community Recognition Program. So we've got flyers prepared for those. And Donna and Ed are really looking forward to, to that event. So they're excited about presenting.
I'm going.
Good.
And I'd also like to, I think Wayne said he wouldn't be able to make it, but I'd like to invite you, Rob, if you'd like to come. It's at 7:30 next Thursday.
I wrote that down.
And then, other than that, we did go ahead and put in the April 22nd for the, the Day of Caring. And so we'll be coordinating with those folks as we go. And hopefully try to lend them a little bit of help this year on trying to get the word out. Again, something we could use your help on too. So as we get along, start producing flyers and some other promotional materials and, and probably be asking for your help to, to distribute that. As you're out and about talking to other folks, just try to remind people that it's a good event to try to bolster our turnout a little bit. But I think those are the highlights for the event calendar. I don't know if anybody had anything else to add or anything that anyone was aware of coming up?
If not, we'll move along to B, Community Outreach and Education. Discussion and possible action regarding community outreach education. You know, we talk about this one every meeting. Anybody have any comments or additional?
Vice Chair, members of the commission, we have had some discussion with the Surbeck Garden Club. They had been interested in attending our last meeting, but were unable to schedule. So we will be reaching out to them to see if they'll be available for the April meeting. And I think that'll probably be a good meeting for them to be at to promote some of their springtime special events and education efforts. So we will try to get that confirmed for the next meeting.
And composting presentation coming up. I'm going to Ontario on, that's why I can't be at the, the thing on Ontario, California for a composting conference for two days over there on the 25th and 26th. So I'll be interested in that presentation for sure.
Rob, I've got a question. I don't know if this goes under agenda or since we're discussing community outreach right now. I know the Public Works Department or the city has its own public, I'm trying to think of the word. Where you go out to the public and talk about things. I know the radio station, the K N T R, that, you know, everybody here in Kingman probably listens to. And I know I've heard our city manager on there, you know, talking about different programs. Is there a possibility that somebody from the Public Works Department, the city, or even our commission can go to that radio program and talk about our programs that we have right now to kind of get it out over the airways?
That's the gentleman down in Laughlin?
Public relations is what I was thinking of.
That's the gentleman down in Laughlin?
Yes, there, there's one in Laughlin, then one also does it in Havasu.
I can talk to the PIO about it. I think they try to rotate through the three cities and the county for different things.
Yes, they do.
Some of our folks have been on there before talking about other programs, but I can talk to our PIO about that.
Sounds great, thank you.
We also, Teresa and I also gave a presentation on the, the things about, that were due with the trails and cleanup and the Helping Hands thing to the masons earlier, like last month, they're so awful.
Good, thank you. Item C, Community Recognition Program Update. No updates at this time, everything's, nothing new to, on, on that subject, yeah.
Well, I guess just in case anybody, you know, for anybody that might be watching, you know, this is a program that the commission spearheaded to, to recognize those businesses or properties that have made significant improvements in their appearance or cleanliness, you know, over, over certain projects. So, you know, we're always willing to look at those and enjoy going out and talking to those people and acknowledging the work that they've done to kind of beautify the city. So those opportunities are out there.
Yes, so to add to that, if anybody has a business or a private individual that they see a lot of improvement in their property or their, or their business landscaping, just let Donna know, call Donna or email Donna and let her know who they are. And Rob and I will go check on the property and then we'll do an application for, for an award.
I guess the other part of that too is what we've done in the past a couple of times is for volunteer groups that have done, you know, scheduled cleanup activities, you know, whether, I think that one young lady's group was from Lee Williams High School. She had done a series of, of cleanups around town. So we were able to have her in and recognize her for her achievements.
Okay, moving along. D, Kingman Helping Hands Project. Discussion and possible action regarding the Kingman Helping Hands Project. Any comments or addition?
Well, again, I guess I'll just do an overview. You know, this is a project that the commission's been working on for a while. It would enable us to enlist volunteers in conjunction with some of our staff and, and commission to, to go out and help people clean up private property. You know, there's some serious hurdles with that as far as liabilities and waiver forms and all that, but I think we've, we've worked through most of that. And so we're kind of rolling out our public outreach process, looking for both, you know, eligible or applicants for, who would need assistance, along with folks who'd be willing to volunteer to work or businesses that may be willing to donate supplies towards that cleanup effort. So, you know, those promotional materials are pretty much prepared. They're all been submitted and I believe they're on the website now. But I think this Chamber Mixer will be a good kickoff for us to, to start going out and spreading the word on this along with the other programs. And start, hopefully we can start building our volunteer list and start getting some applicants that we can review. I know Donna's met with Neighborhood Services as far as folks who may be having trouble with code compliance, you know, nuisance, nuisances on their property. And so, you know, we'll be working with them to generate some leads on some places where maybe we could help out where people, and the intent is, this is for, you know, folks who don't have the means either physically or financially to, to clean up their property and could use a hand doing it, so.
Mike and I, about a month ago, we went out to several larger churches in town and promoted the Adopt a Block and that program.
Okay.
So.
I, I would just ask you, if you do that, please notify us so we can keep a list so we're not bugging people that you've already talked to.
Oh, no, we have a list, yeah.
I made a big list of all the ones that we've talked to and I believe Teresa sent them to you, so we've got that.
Good.
Any, have we heard from any of those people yet? Okay.
I did get my church on board with Adopt a Block.
Adopt a Block's the next on the list.
Yeah.
If, Rob, if you're...
My segue.
We'll move on if you're...
Have we got any prospects yet for, to help out with the Helping Hands that need help yet or?
Not, not yet, no.
We'll move on to E, Adopt a Block Program. I had some discussion on that. And the one thing that I wanted to comment on, I know Teresa and C was working on the Adopt a Block heavily. And now I understand, I guess Randy and Mike are working on that now. So we talked months ago about assigning certain things for certain people so everybody's not tripping over each other or doing the same thing. And I just want to say I appreciate Randy and Mike doing that. Just make sure you keep in contact with Donna and keep giving her a list of people so we have a master list. So if I run into somebody, I want to check with Donna first before I approach him on that. Rob, anything you might have or?
Oh, my, my question would be, do we have a list of organizations or companies that, of blocks that have already been adopted or the whole city's wide open?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Donna has a list.
So say that one's taken or whatever?
Yeah, so you might want to check with her before you guys go out running around and...
That one's taken, but it's a mess.
I've got a question about these two projects. One thing I just wanted to clarify. If an individual wants to volunteer, but they're not part of a group or organization, can they submit their names and, and we can compile, you know, you know, form a group with individuals?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
We do have a volunteer list.
Okay.
So, yeah, as we, you know, and, and hopefully, you know, it seems like I've been saying this for three years, but, you know, as we started getting out and participating in more special events, that was also, that was always the place where we were able to, to sign up a few folks for volunteers, you know, folks who were interested, but maybe couldn't make this one, but might be able to make the next one, so.
Just wondering, is there, I hate to go back to the calendar, but is there a city, every year the city puts on a little presentation over at the park there and, you know, is there one scheduled for this year that we can set up a tent for that?
I'm sure there will be.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, anything else, move along? New business, Clean City Commission Vacancies. Discussion and possible action regarding Clean City Commission vacancy.
Well, this is just kind of an information piece for now. We, we have received one application that's kind of going through the process for review. Then we'll be forwarded to council for their consideration. So we do have the two remaining vacancies. And that's, that's really all I have to report at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I would have liked to have been able to report that we had three applications under review, but I didn't.
Thank you, Rob. B, Election of Officers. Discussion and action regarding selection of the new chairperson and vice chairperson.
So, you know, with the, we're moved into new calendar year. Generally, we elect new officers at the new calendar year. Our former chair has resigned. So our vice chair, Mr. Oberg, you know, will be running the meetings. We could either appoint a, a chair and a vice chair tonight. You know, it is on the agenda, we could do that. Or we could wait until we fill, you know, see if we'd have some more seats to make that decision. So that's, that's purely up to, up to you.
I nominate Rod.
You nominate Rod for chairperson?
For chairperson, yeah, for chair.
We have a nomination?
And I'd like to nominate Commissioner Carpenter as vice chair.
Yeah, we'll need to second the first motion. We'll need a second for...
We need a second for motion to nominate?
I'll second for Rob.
For the chair.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Speech, speech.
I make a motion. That Randy is vice chair?
I second it.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got her done.
Beautification signs. Discussion and possible action regarding beautification signs. I think Mike was working on a lot of that. Any discussion on that?
Well, I'd like to just reiterate what I've said before, that there are no signs in this town, you know, to please pick up your trash. And, you know, we're a tourist town, we want this town to be clean. I think it's still a good idea to put some of these signs in, in key locations. I've also got another idea along with that, is we've got a lot of trash cans down through Andy Devine and Beale Street, and they just say City of Kingman on there. I read Mr. Owen's report about, you know, how the cost of it and the additional signage. And yes, this town has a lot of signs. So maybe somebody could decide which way they want to go. But, you know, I was thinking we could put, even put signs on these trash cans, you know, because as it says, the City of Kingman in those trash cans don't look very beautiful. And maybe we could put a nice sign on there, you know, riveted onto there, either the side or someplace like that. But just to draw attention, because there, you know, I walk downtown a lot because I live downtown. And I pick up trash a lot and it's constant. You know, I can go there one day and the next day there's just all kinds of trash there. And I'd really like to see that get cleaned up.
Well, we can definitely look into it. I mean, you know, cost is a consideration, you know, and generally we can only put up signage in, in the right of way. And, you know, at some point, you know, you kind of lose sight of the trees for the forest when you have, you know, signs everywhere. But we can, we can look at maybe a couple of alternatives and see what that may cost and, and, you know, bring that back to you.
And I know if the cost is a concern, that there's a lot of projects that the city's doing that's getting grants for, like putting up a rock wall over at the park there and making a trail up to White Cliffs. Does the, I don't know if it's the Public Works Department or if it's the city in general that applies for these grants, but is there grants that we can get to apply for the Clean City Commission programs that we're trying to get adopted?
I mean, I won't say no, but I'll say generally no. You know, Arizona's not well-known for funding those types of activities, you know. As far as what we do out of Public Works, there are grants available for safety projects, you know, where people have been killed or severely injured in accident, we get grant money. We've done some of that on Stockton Hill Road. You know, when, when we started up our recycling program, it was funded with a grant from Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, partially grant-funded. You know, that lasted for like one year. There isn't a whole lot of funding statewide. There is a separate fund that was set up for parks and recreation and trails, and that was voted on by the voters, and that comes from lottery revenues. There is no funding source like that for beautification efforts that I'm aware of.
So, we're just basically relying on the volunteerism of the community. I mean, businesses can't even get people, employ people, you know, nobody wants to work, so it's really hard trying to get volunteers, I mean...
I understand. I mean, you know, I mean, everything that we do as the Solid Waste Department is funded by our customers, you know, and so we have to, you know, we have to be real conscious of that, that these, everything we do, we're responsible for the ratepayers, you know, what we're spending and how we're spending it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, sometimes I'm sure I sound cheap, but, you know, that's kind of the way I was raised. I mean, it's important to us that, you know, our ratepayers are confident that we're being the best stewards of their, their money as we can be, so. But we'll try to, we'll try to see if we can find a couple, maybe alternatives, but, and bring them back to you.
It'd be neat if we could get some trash cans, you know, like the cool water tower we have that says Route 66, Kingman, with the train painted on it, get some really heavy-duty cans and paint murals on them to, and put them throughout the city to kind of bring it all together, and somebody will see that can and go, oh, yeah, that's, that's a cool trash can, we need to put...
And they'll take it home with them, too.
Well, chain them down.
We don't want to have them long.
Well, I mean, you know, that is the plan for downtown, is that there's this coordinated effort to, you know, the trash cans are going to be the same, you know, the benches are going to be the same, it's just, funding a project like that is troublesome, so. But, yeah, that is the vision for downtown, is that there will be this kind of uniformity of design throughout, it's going to be good-looking stuff, and everybody will know what it is, and, you know, but, yeah.
We're going to have to get that same vision going up Stockton Hill then, up in that area, yeah.
So, the Clean City Commission used to have a budget. We had no longer have any money in our budget, or we're not getting allocated any money, or how, what, how is that working?
Not to disagree, but the Clean City Commission never had any money. The Solid Waste Department had money earmarked for special events, including Clean City events. And we do have a, you know, it has been reduced, but we do still have funding there, and generally we use that when we, we buy trees for the Arbor Day event, when we're buying materials for public outreach, and when we, we used to do the county fair every year, and then kind of came to the conclusion, or at least the past commission did, that that wasn't a great use of money, because we're handing out information to kids, but they're kids from Fort Mojave, so, you know, so we do have some money there. It's just a matter of, you know, prioritizing what that goes towards. In the past, we funded some of the, oh, what was that called? We used to work with schools where, you know, they would do certain projects, and we would reimburse them for those costs of those projects, you know, whatever those were, so. We do have those programs, we do have a limited funding source, but it's within the Solid Waste Division.
I'd like to say you do a really good job with the funding that we do have in Kingman, as we learned through the Kingman Citizens Academy. Plugging that again, go check it out, guys, it's really cool.
So, we used to have, what, thirteen thousand dollars that was allocated from solid waste, I guess, to the commission, which we paid for the funding for the low-cost cleanup, cleanup and stuff like that. So, that's no longer allocated, but there is some money there?
Well, again, it was always in solid waste budget. It was thirteen thousand dollars at one time, I believe it's seven thousand dollars now, and so...
Does that carry over from year to year? Since COVID, we didn't do anything last year?
You start fresh every year.
Hope we had a good project, we could, yeah, fund it somewhat.
Right. Well, like I say, I can come up with a couple of alternatives, and we can take a look at them and see if it's something that kind of meets what you're looking for, and something we can afford to do.
So, would that money be part of maybe what we would be spending on the Helping Hands?
Yes.
Thing?
Yeah. Yeah. Along with the other awards that, you know, that we plaques.
Awards, the plaques, yeah. Adopt a Block, yep. Okay, anything else on beautification, number C? We'll move on to landscape buffers. I've been, I've been wanting that, I've been asking to put that on the agenda for probably a year now, but I'll just be brief, quick and brief on it. Community Development handles all weed abatement, stuff like that. They'll go out and actually give people thirty-day notices when they see a weed problem in a landscape buffer. My thought on what the Clean City Commission could do is come up with a one-page, just a little flyer to educate people what a landscape buffer is, not a big, long, drawn-out community development idea what it is. Just let them know that if there's a landscape area between their side yard and the sidewalk, and there's trees or plants, that's their responsibility behind, you know, just to, and I came up with one, and I showed it to Rob back in November, just a little one-page flyer, so when all of us are driving around, going to Walmart, and we see somebody that on their side yard, they're letting that grow up, because the block wall's there, and they don't really see that area, but it is, they're responsible, we just send them a, we just put a stamp on an envelope and send them that flyer. All pay for the stamps, you know. There's one person in my neighborhood, I think if we just sent them a nice flyer, top of the flyer should say friendly reminder, landscape buffer, this is your, your area, your responsibility, and just a quick explanation of what a landscape buffer is. And maybe it just takes that flyer to go, whoa, I didn't know, I'm supposed to take care of that. We have a lot of people moving in from other states, and a lot of states, they don't care about landscape buffers, or it's not the responsibility of the homeowner. So, that's why I've been wanting to put that on there. I'd like to come up, I'd like the commission to, you know, maybe if we have to vote on it, come up with a flyer, or let Rob and I come up with a nice one-page flyer. We know Community Development's working very heavily on that. I know four people in my neighborhood have got thirty-day notices, but I think a lot of it, we don't, we don't have to start out with a thirty-day notice, let's just send them a flyer. You know, it may be twenty flyers a month, at the cost of a stamp. And then, so what are your thoughts, Rob, on that?
Well, just as a follow-up, since, since you and I have talked about it, I've, I talked to the fire chief about it. We have done this in the past, where we'll send out a mailer, and basically, and I think, and I think, I think the chief's on board with it. But we put one together before in conjunction with, you know, Public Works, PD, and Fire, and I think this year would be a good year to do it. We know it's going to be a bad weed year, it is already. I got, I got knee-high weeds in my yard when it's twenty degrees outside. But, you know, just, it's the basics, right, and what it is, yeah, property owner's responsible for maintenance of the right-of-way adjacent to their property. And, yeah, so anyway, I talked to fire chief about it. I think, you know, unless you have any objections, I think that I can work with him and, you know, our transportation assistant, Public Works Director, and PD as far as code enforcement goes, just to draft that. And again, I think it's, like you say, it's informational, right, it's just...
Friendly information type.
We know this is going to be a bad year.
That's a good way to get the community wakened up to keeping the, you know, our community cleaned up, you know, that's just a way they could pay...
And I think, you know, we'll be coordinating with the Public Information Officer on best ways to distribute that, and, but, yeah, I mean, so we're willing to, you know, work on it, I guess.
I have quite a bit to say about this one. This goes right along with the water. We're short water, we've been in a drought for twenty-some years. We have no curb cuts, we have nothing planted along the road, we're talking about bumpouts down on Beale Street, what are we going to plant in them, or are they going to be concrete and hot and what have you? The perfect place to put in your water harvesting things with your trees and shrubs and stuff like that, in the places that meets the requirement, because you've got to consider the things that, the utilities in the ground, and your, the sidewalk or no sidewalk, and how far you have from the curb to the, to the end of the right-of-way and all this stuff. I mean, all we've got to do is look at TuFon, see what they've did, and see if we can't do that here. I mean, it's utterly ridiculous that we, that we can't do anything. It's, it's hot, it's, when it rains, the water leaves the area just as fast as we can get it out of here. We, we do nothing on that thing, and it's, and I'm not saying we, the, here, but the people, we don't enlist them to do those things. We don't promote it to those people, because they live here. It's, it's their city, it's not our city, it's everybody who lives here is city, and it's not the government city, it's, it's everybody here. So, if we don't put it out there and give them a chance, we need to identify the areas that we could do those type of things, because you can't, you can't do it everywhere, because it's, the conditions aren't right, and the utilities are there, but, and we can't do it all in one year, so, but we need to have a program that gives the people a reason to do that stuff. I mean, you look out here, most of the people, if they're going to build a new house, they scrape all the things off the land, you got bare land, hot, dry, dusty. Well, we just made it hot, dry, and dusty-er by doing that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Howland, if I can, if I can air, you know, that's not on the agenda, I mean, we're talking about weeds right now.
So, why can't we come up with something to promote that?
Let's put on the agenda for next, let's put on agenda, maybe talk about, I see where he's going with this, maybe some kind of a help, almost like our Helping Hands thing, where you help people maybe plant some plants. That's going to be a hard one, because they're not going to want to water them, so.
Well, that's why you have the curb cut, so when it rains, the water goes in there.
Yeah, well, we're talking about landscape buffers, so we'll...
That's exactly what I'm saying, you landscape them, you plant trees, shrubs...
A lot of them aren't landscape buffers anymore, they're rock, yeah.
It's a good, good spot for mulch, thick mulch that collects water and keeps weeds down and all that.
Just go to TuFon.
So, take a look. We will work with the fire department.
Let's work, let's get the weeds gone first, or at least the weeds are...
That's all part of the...
Yeah.
Rob, I'd just like to make a comment, I think the letter would be a good idea, you know, it's a nice, polite, calm way of bringing the landscape buffers attention to the residents, and, you know, and then if we have to take it further than that, possibly, but, you know, usually just a, a nice thing to say, hey, you know, okay, please clean it up, a lot of people will do it, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's an enforcement program in place, it's just a matter of, maybe we can head some of that off.
I know there's, there's an enforcement program in place, but it kind of seems like there's a reluctance to enforce that. And, you know, there shouldn't be a reluctance, you know, this is our city, this, we want it clean, you know. I, I can't stress that enough, I don't know why other people don't feel that way.
It's like my three neighbors, they got, if they would have got a little friendly reminder, they probably would have taken care of it, but instead, they got a thirty-day notice, which is fine, too, they still took care of it, but I think we can approach it maybe ahead of time before that, and take some of the heat off of the fire department, too, you know.
So, that goes for businesses as well, right, the landscape buffer?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean...
In particular, I'm talking about...
Yeah, I'm talking about right-of-way, so...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, right-of-way's...
We're talking about property owners, too.
We're talking about on the public sidewalk sites.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's where most of the landscape buffers are.
I was going to go...
Most landscape buffers adjacent to city streets, so.
So, what's a landscape buffer if it's not vegetation or rocks? Rocks don't do much for water, but...
Well, I mean, landscape buffer was Mr. Oberg's term, right? I mean, we're talking about right-of-way that's adjacent to a person's property, so...
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
In my neighborhood, the first, you know, ten, ten feet behind the curb, that's still all right-of-way. I'm responsible to maintain that, so I think that's, I think some people are confused about that, that maybe they lived in a different situation, maybe they lived where there was an HOA that took care of that for them, you know, I don't know, but I think it's just that information.
That's exactly the area I'm talking about.
But a business is responsible for the area around their business as well, right? I was thinking of Walmart, and behind that wall along the wash, I didn't go by there lately, but hopefully it's cleaned up under those trees. Because that's, that's actually a hazard, I think, a safety hazard back there.
I think somebody mentioned that, the trees and stuff down on, on Beale Street at the, at the city council meeting. Trees cool, make it desirable for people to be out there, it will reduce the temperature, like twenty degrees, and if you have those things all over the city, not just necessarily one street...
So, Rob, wouldn't that be more of a city council agenda item, or something that should be brought up to city council instead of the Clean City Commission? Adding more landscaping to do to accommodate or to...
It was last Tuesday, so, that's quite the discussion, so, that's, not to, not to promote getting out the agenda anymore, but, you know, that's what the Beale Street project, that's a big part of it, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Anything else, Wayne? I'm with you. Okay, we'll move on.
Want to know?
We'll move on, and Wayne and I will brainstorm some other time. We've went through reports, announcements by commission members, limited to announce, limited to announcements, availability, attendance, conferences, seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings. We'll start with Mike.
Yes, I've got an agenda item I'd like to see. At the last meeting, I believe it was in October, there was discussions about where to have that cleanup there in November, and from what I noticed, it's like the discussions went on forever, and nothing was resolved, and then it was left over into your hands to pick a place later on. So, I'd like to see on the agenda items, maybe come up with four or five definite places and rotate them each cleanup, and that way, we don't have to waste so much time trying to discuss where we're going to have a cleanup, and then eventually be told, well, we'll let you know later. That's all I have.
I, I agree with that. Just a quick little announcement, back to the, the white building that's over in the Staples Big Five Shopping Center, it was a Mexican restaurant. Everybody knows I've been working with the owners to try and get it cleaned up and keep it cleaned up, and it has. She's spent a fair amount of money getting it cleaned up, all the graffiti taken off, the front doors, the, when the glass was broken out, she got that all replaced. Anyway, and I've been keeping an eye on it for her, it's looking really nice and clean over there, and she did sign a lease, and hopefully, within about three weeks, we may start seeing some activity over there. That was my announcement. Wayne?
Again, as I said, I'm going to that composting conference, but I'd also like something on the agenda about... about wood chips and mulch. We ha- we have no place to get any of, of a great quantity. And we send it all to the dump. It's like, why can't we in the county get together and make wood chips and get out to the people? Because that's part of the water harvesting thing, that, if you don't do nothing else, if you just mulch the land, that, that's the first step of, of putting water into the ground.
There's a lot of dead pine trees up on Wallapi.
It says there, is there, don't we have a water commission of some sort?
That would be my recommendation for. These are, these are announcements, so these aren't really discussion items, so I guess, you know, you can make your announcement.
Okay.
We move on to the next, next member.
I would request it on the agenda.
In the future.
Is it?
Randy?
Yeah, I got my church involved, we're going to do the Adopt a Block, so we're going to do, uh, spring and fall. And since we're going every three months now, shouldn't we, uh, schedule a cleanup for the, a Clean City Commission cleanup now? For some time? I don't know, just a thought, because we don't go every month now, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, would you like to say anything, introduce yourself?
No, I mean, I introduce myself.
Yeah. Great, thank you for attending, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
And then next Thursday morning, right, at seven thirty, it's the mixed. Is that it?
Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Have a second?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor? Here we go.